Order the regular board meeting of the Westmifflin area school district on Thursday, May 21st, 2020. The Westmifflin area school district regular board meeting on Thursday, May 21st, 2020 is being held virtually via Zoom, meeting to begin at 7 o'clock. Opening exercises, roll call.
Hey, Ahern.
Got unmuted, your mic.
She's on mute. But Judy's here. Alexandrov.
Here.
Lazovich. Engler.
Here.
Costelnic.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Mattis.
Here.
White.
Here.
And D'Scenzo.
Here.
Presentations.
Yes, Mr. President, we have one presentation tonight by Steve Ford of Ford Business Machines. Mr. Ford?
Okay, so I've got this presentation on what we were kind of talking about in Technology Committee here. And if you'll just bear with me for just a second, I'll share my screen with you. So this is something we raised in committee. We're talking about doing a K through five, one-to-one program. And here's basically an overview of how that program's going to work or how we would like for it to work. We're going to go in and we're going to increase the district's equipment at the K5 levels. We're going to use Lenovo 300 series machines that we've been using in the middle school and high school to great success for the fourth and fifth grade students. And then we're going to use the iPads for the kindergarten, third grade. And we're going to be exploring the options for protection, whether it's the Apple Care Plan to help with device damage, or using a really high-end case, or both. We're going to go ahead and also create a plan to facilitate district hardware. Obviously, these things have a lifespan of about four to five years. We're going to start collecting laptops from the seniors and actually that's something we've already done for the graduating senior class this year. And we're going to put them into the extended school year program. The bad part about this, obviously with coronavirus going on, there's a bit more of a lead time than what we would like on equipment. It's a seven to 10 week lead out on most things. Most of your mobile devices are kind of taken up. And it'll take us probably about three weeks to prepare those. And that's an estimate here. I mean, it could be a lot, could be a lot sooner than that. But it's always good to go on the high side when you're estimating these things. But I feel pretty comfortable about getting a beginning of the year start with a fresh load out for kindergarten through fifth grades. That way, everybody has a one-to-one device, especially with everything that's going on lately. You really couldn't have seen that one coming. We're also going to look towards increasing our professional development with the staff. We're going to have some Microsoft 365 training from our in-house librarian, Patty King, and then some Schoology up training with Kevin Kocher. He's our resident Schoology guru. We've got these resources already in-house, so it makes sense to use them. We're also going to talk to the building principals and seeing exactly what they're seeing there and schedule professional development accordingly. Another thing we're going to move on to, we're going to continue to improve with remote learning. I mean, that's something that we've kind of come into just out of necessity. We already got the platform set up. We were quite lucky in that regard. We did have Schoology already. It took us some tooling to get it to work exactly as it works now. But by and large, it was, it was a success, I think. And we're going to go down to the finalization of the new website. Our current website, as most people know, is getting a little dated. We qualify for a full redesign on that. And we're going to emulate a couple other districts in terms of form and function. So that way, it flows a lot better. It's easier for the staff, the students, and the parents to use. And I would say this much, we're long overdue for that. And since they're going to do it for free, we might as well take advantage of that situation to its fullest. And that's pretty much where I'm at with the K through five rollout there. So if you would, I have another screen I'd like to share with you. I don't like to try to take up too much time, but I think these are important things. Moving right along, this is kind of the state of our district right now, the State of the Union, if you will. We came into this pretty early on and we were tasked with a couple, a couple of things that we needed to take care of. Out of the gate, we identified some pretty impressive security issues and remediated those quite quickly. I mean, we had remote desktops out to the public internet and that was a, that was a pretty big deal. We also had direct file sharing access to the internet as well. I didn't really see where anything had been taken. No, no evidence there, but again, not a good thing to have. We turned it off immediately. We updated the firmware on the firewall and also upgraded all the operating systems on the servers. So that way, they would be compliant with security patches and not necessarily, like basically waiting to, waiting to have ransomware in the middle of the night. We want to try to avoid that. We ensured that our VMware environment was stable and patched up to include all the recent bug fixes along with that because you got to make sure your environment's stable. We evaluated the needs of the district in terms of software allocation and licenses because I know that was a big topic there. We want to make sure we're using what we're paying for to the best of our ability. We just renewed our licenses with Microsoft and we are getting an excellent price on those campus-wide. And I think we should continue to use those accordingly. We're also going to evaluate some redundancy that we found in some of our teaching platforms. And again, you know, these are under scrutiny right now. We're going to try to take a look at that a little bit more in-depth, figure out which one of those stay and which one of those go. We developed a technology plan to move critical data systems off-site to a proper climate-controlled, power-conditioned, fire-suppressed environment. Right now, as it would stand, all of our most critical equipment is in a, a room, basically, that does not have proper fire suppression or adequate cooling. So we're going to move that off-site. Benefits of doing that is we have less of a burden to the district in terms of upkeep and certainly less burden for overall procurement cost, which enables us to not only save money but also have the best equipment that's out there on the market. We also went ahead and used our E-Rate funding pretty well. We appraised the network equipment that we have, the wireless, the wireless network equipment especially, and the UPS batteries to keep them up in case there's a power failure because we all know that we get power failures pretty frequently up this area. It's, it's, it's important to make sure that you're ready for that. So we're going to be replacing the district firewall because it's aging and we're going to use our E-Rate funding to do that. Of course, we have a 15% contribution, which is required by the FCC. We're going to replace any aging wireless access points at the elementary school and help shore that up. Again, we have the 15% commitment that we have to pay per the FCC. We also took care of an issue at Clara Barton specifically that was causing the wireless network not to function. And actually, people thought the network was, was actually not in good repair. It was actually a configuration issue. We found it, we remediated. It's working well now. We will also be replacing, as I mentioned, the aging UPS battery units and the switching closets at all the district locations, again, using the federal money from the E-Rate program minus our 15% commitment. We're also, we also developed, tested, and deployed distance learning solutions through Schoology. Again, this was part and parcel of what I said earlier. Nobody really could have saw the coronavirus pandemic coming. We had a very limited amount of time to prepare for it. Thankfully, we already had Schoology in place and we were able to retool it to work in a virtual learning capacity and send the, send the students off-site with their devices, the sixth through 12th grade that has that. So in the future, us coming up with the K through five rollout, all of our kids are going to be participating in this platform. And that's, and that's definitely the right track considering the, the environment that we're living in now. We don't really know how, how stable it's going to be. Things are seeming to get back to normal, but again, we want to make sure that we're ready for it if it comes back. We were able to use spare laptops from the high school one-to-one program to outfit our school board and administrators with a viable means of communication. So that way, during this time of pandemic, because of all the social distancing and all that stuff that went on there, obviously, we can't all sit around the board table and meet as we typically would. And it's also important to have continuity of business. So that's something that we did as well. We also, as I just got through presenting, established the K to 12, the K to 12 one-to-one program. This is a true one-to-one rollout. So every student in the district is going to get a device, no matter what grade level they're in. But the option here is to start letting the students take the devices home in the fourth grade, but have them on-site just in case something would happen. So for our K through three kids, we're going to give them iPads and they're going to keep them at the school locations. If there's a problem, they're going to, they're going to be able to quickly and easily move those off-site to continue learning without any kind of fail there. And again, you know, we're going to be using the Microsoft-based laptops from Lenovo or whatever shipping at the time I placed the order. They, you know, the generation twos are what currently are out there. They may switch over. It's hard to, it's hard to say, but we're going to, by and large, keep the same format there because it's worked well. And then obviously, we don't really know what the turnaround time is going to be for this. I'm anticipating that we will have everything for the fall of 2020. And that's pretty much all I had in that respect for my presentation. And I just want to, just want to iterate this as well. By signing the agreement that will be proposed a little bit later here and this tech plan as well as moving the servers off-site to a data center facility, we stand to save about $500,000 or so over the next five years as a district. So if with that, I, my presentation piece is over and I go ahead and yield.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask Dr. Hoover a question? He might recall this because we sort of got stuck here with the kids not having laptops.
Can't hear you.
Oh geez. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear.
Okay. We got stuck with the younger kids not having laptops. Why didn't we originally, when we did that big purchase, because that was when I believe Nick, Mrs. Ahern, and I first got on the board, was it just a strategic plan that they weren't required at that level or was that something the district was looking to do downhill?
Well, again, I mean, at that time, Dave, I think that the plan was, obviously, number one, we didn't predict the coronavirus or whatever for them to have devices, but it would have been a money issue. I think at that time, we purchased the laptops out of Title I and that was all the funding that we had available at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Ford? All right, thanks, Mr. Ford. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Tony.
Hearing of the citizens, public comment to be made by 12:00 PM on Thursday, May 21st, 2020 via email sent to publiccomment@wmasd.org. In order to provide comment through the district's website, the following must be met. Must include your name and home address in the email. Must be a Westmifflin Whittaker or Duquesne resident. Matter must have been discussed through the proper education channels, direct email comments to the board president and/or superintendent. Mr. Esper, do we have any public comment this evening?
Yes, Mr. President, we have a number of comments. The first comment, and not all of these people included their address, but we'll assume that they're Westmifflin residents. First is from Diane Stenasek. She says, "To vote no to page 1, 5A, item 3. This person has not done a superintendent search since 2013 and at that rate." Page 2, item under Finance. "Why was there nothing said there is a tax increase? It should be there as well as any positions that are being eliminated. I, anything, the school police should be eliminated as their cost is probably the rate at least one mil given their salaries, benefits, and so forth. Just hire more security from our current company and especially ones with Act 235 to carry." Page 3, "No to item number 8. This comes out to be $956,000 or nine, it's $956,000 contract that never went out for bid. We have our very skilled ID, IT department." Page 5, item 2B. "Why is the district being charged for this and why did delay any items in its entirety for a six-month lag on receiving an invoice?" And, and she finishes by saying, "If there is a note, new motion under new business, how does the public comment?"
Chris, can you answer that last question?
Yeah, I don't think that there is a new motion. And if there is public comment, we either have to table it until next meeting if we're adding a new motion. I don't anticipate we're adding any new motions, but we weary of that. We would have to allow public comment on any new motions that are not on the agenda.
I don't, I was trying to write Joe and keep up with what you said.
She was questioning this.
She asked, the, I believe, based on the information that was presented to the board that the Ford proposal is a savings to the district compared to the, the way we operated prior to them coming to the district. I believe over the course of the five-year contract, Mr. Ford estimated that would be about a $500,000 savings to the district. So she references the amount, the dollar amount in, in reality, it's going to be a savings for us to go in this direction.
She commented about the tax increase.
Not being listed in the motion?
Yeah, but we'll, we'll cover that in my presentation.
Okay.
And commented about, Dr.
So just so we're clear, the proposed budget is just a proposed budget. Then we'll have a 30-day comment period that anyone can make on the budget. The budget will include the tax increase. And then at the next meeting after the 30-day period, we will vote on the tax increase and the, and the budget at that meeting. So anyone will have the ability to comment on the budget in that 30-day period as well as the tax increase.
Yes, this is Gary Matta, too, just to add the, when there's a tax increase, if there is a tax increase, that mileage rate has to be approved by motion on the agenda. And that would happen in the June meeting, not in this meeting.
And then, Joe, I believe she commented on the motion for us to hire Dr. Diarcangelo?
Yes.
Okay. You know, the board actually had a rather extensive, lengthy process to come to this decision to move in this direction. And I believe, I speak for everyone in saying that we felt, feel that he's very qualified to lead us and assist us in, in this search and through this process. So, you know, he's done this before. He's done this in many districts. There are other forms of searches out there and I believe we could spend a lot of money if we went into another direction. So, you know, I feel confident that this is going to yield us a successful candidate and this is the direction that this, this board and district should be going in.
Okay, so I think that's... And I can address the other ones throughout the meeting. The next comment is from Brittany Velez. She's a senior at Westmifflin. And I'm going to paraphrase some of these because some of them are lengthy. She would like us to set chairs six feet apart at the stadium and video record the ceremony. This is about graduation. Section off the families accordingly. Orderly have everybody enter and exit. She knows that there's not supposed to be more than 25 people. However, we have to try. Our voices need to be heard. Graduation is a huge milestone for us. I'm the second person in my family to graduate. I would like to walk with my class before I go active, active-duty Navy. Please, we have to.
I, Joe, are there multiple ones covering that topic?
Yeah, so let me just, let me go, let me go through them. The next one is from Sydney Tishon. She's also a senior. She realizes the world is falling apart. We realize this is a very sensitive subject, especially to the community of Westmifflin. When I posted on the community page, seniors worried they won't get a prom or graduation. I then got 100 adults coming after me telling me I'm selfish, we don't deserve it. It's not at the top of the list right now. She realizes that there are bigger issues. Parents, not even the seniors, want a normal graduation ceremony to happen. Her mom posted a picture, which I will attach below, which is a picture of my home of the Neville Tigers where I guess they, they set up chairs at a proper distance for, I would, I would imagine, a graduation. We just spent a whole lot of unnecessary money on the field. Parents even volunteered to help set it up. We have two sets of bleachers. Main stand can hold two loved ones, watch their children graduate safely six feet apart. She believes that it can be done in the bleachers. She doesn't want to take away from us because you're too lazy or don't have a kid in the senior class or you just don't care. She wanted, talking about losing three months of school. They deserve, she deserves a graduation. People compiling the Walmart, Giant Eagle, Target. Thank, thank you for reading this. We've been struggling the past few months because we have heard not one thing about graduation or anything on the subject the whole year. And I do apologize, I am trying to paraphrase. So that was from her. Next one is from Rachel Schmude or Schmody. She has a daughter, Madison. She's a senior. Seniors deserve a proper graduation, which could be done on a football field. They have had so much taken away from them that they deserve to go out with a bang. Next one is for Erin Bayless. "I'm writing to give suggestions for an outdoor, personal, social-distance graduation. We can all come together to make it work. There's currently no law against graduation. The rules 25, only, only rules of 25 people in an area. The stadium is plenty big enough to put 25 people spread out over the square footage. I'm not for a drive-up graduation. These kids, kids deserve normal graduation. We can pull this off. We currently have three dates. Please stick with the dates and figure a way to make this work." Next one is from Pamela Weaver. "Good afternoon. She's a parent of a 2020 graduating senior. She heard so many rumors. Her son worked hard to get to this point. He's gone away to college in August. He deserves an in-person graduation. Kids have lost so much, it's not fair to them. When we look back on the year, we'll always be sad they didn't get a prom, saying goodbye to teachers or friends, even their high school. Senior skip day, senior banquets. Please help them give, please help give them their graduation." Next one is from Gina DeBallo. She's talking about rumors of a grad, drive-up graduation ceremony scheduled for June 4th or sworn about. I'm sure this is quickly being put together for a couple reasons, one of them being that someone got wind that the parade was being planned by the parents for that date. Myself, as a parent of a graduate, I say no to a drive-up. We were originally told from a letter sent on April 24th about three possible graduation dates. All dependent upon how our illustrious governor will allow. Most of us know well. And it's my understanding that these dates were set aside so we can hopefully have a traditional in-person graduation ceremony. What happened to that? We are nearing the first suggested graduation date. We have plenty of time to plan in-person, social-distance for either one of the remaining two greats, dates. Our graduates have already lost so much this year. We need to pull together and make an in-person graduation become a reality. She says no to a drive-up graduation. And the last one is from Andrea Jocinski. Now, this is different. She says, "First of all, the teachers and the principals at Hellville during the pandemic have been amazing. They are all doing an awesome job with what they have been given to work with, but so far, overall, K through five has been a complete mess since the stay-at-home orders were issued. The lack of technology for K through 12 has left our, left our children nothing but busy work at home, learning nothing new. I know this is a new situation. It's never happened before, but I and the other parents are looking for answers because we decide, we need to decide whether we need to pursue other educational options such as cyber charter schools for the fall." And she would like to know what kind of plan is going to be in place for next year. And that's it. And again, I apologize for paraphrasing a lot of that.
Hey, I would like to say quick about the graduation stuff. Earlier today, I sent a letter to Representative Quartz. I'm going to read it real quick just so there, stuff, so you understand what his responses was. Representative Quartz, "I respectfully request as a citizen and a school board member of the Westmifflin area school district that you work with your colleagues in Harrisburg to allow a high school graduation in July or sooner in a way that we could have a public gathering. That 25-people limitation will not allow us to do this. We could spread the kids out on the field and have them six feet apart. We could have it at the stadium and have 1,000 people come and be spread out in a space that fits 5,000 people to ensure social distancing, distancing, excuse me, both sides of the stadium, every other row, multiple entrances with procedures in place to ensure that large groups do not congregate. Our security company is working on processes to have the temperatures checked at the gates. I appreciate your consideration." After that, Representative Quartz responded, "Dave, I would recommend that the Westmifflin school board and administrative staff draft a detailed plan. That plan would include board sign-off of how to stage a graduation ceremony following safety protocols needed during this pandemic. Please be detailed as the number of attendees include families, locations, dates, and times. It submits same to Governor Wolf and Secretary of Education, Pedro Rivera. Only Governor Wolf himself can grant a graduation ceremony through the Secretary of Education. We do not have the power to override the governor's shutdown order. We tried to veto to override it Wednesday night, 520, and it failed by 20 votes. By the way, I voted yes to override as veto. If you do send a plan to the governor, please CC myself, Senator Brewster, and Representative Austin Davis. We will write letters of support. Signed, Bill." So that's some information I forwarded to the whole board so that we could discuss this. I have a daughter who's graduating this year. I would like her and all her friends is normal and close to the graduation that my son had a couple of years ago, that these kids do deserve it. And it's unfortunate that the governor has gone and threatened state-level funding if we go forward and possibly break the law by moving forward and having any sort of graduation with more than 25 people. So, thank you.
Just a real quick comment. You know, obviously, we're very aware that the seniors deserve a graduation ceremony. I don't believe that with the restrictions that are currently in place, that June 4th is going to allow for any type of in-person graduation ceremony. It's going to even closely resemble what a normal graduation would be. We do have two other dates out there, June 26th and July 17th. There's a possibility we can come up with something creative. But again, we want to make sure that it's nice and something that's going to be remember, remembered by the seniors if we do have something like that. We're not giving up hope yet. Again, we're not going to violate the governor's orders either. So we just got to, I think, be patient at this time and see what happens. He said today, there's going to be a lot of counties that are going to be going into, from red to yellow and then yellow to green. So, you know, maybe in a couple of weeks' time, we may have a different outlook on this. We're going to keep working at it, keep talking. Mr. Lick and I talk every single day about it, so if we can put something together, we certainly will.
Thank you, Dr. Hoover. Does anybody else have anything to add? Mrs. Ahern, you're muted. You have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
There you go. Yes.
I unmuted. Uh... Dave said he forwarded that to us? What he read?
A half hour ago. If you didn't, I'll forward it to your other address.
Yeah, my home one, please.
I just sent it to Representative Quartz, so...
Oh, I thought you said you forwarded it to all the board.
Oh, I did. I did forward it through the school board thing, but I'll forward it to you personally too to make sure.
Okay, if you did it to the school board, I'll get it.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Hoover, can you address the, the confusion with the June 4th graduation drive-through?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Quite honestly, you know, again, we weren't sure where the parade was going. Nobody really got a hold of us. I knew that it was on and off, on and off, on and off. But I know that Mr. Lick had put out something to the senior students that they could come by and pick up their diploma and their, their final transcripts is really what's important for them to get because a lot of them got to send them out to colleges, they may need them for jobs, military, whatever. And that was just a way of getting them out, having them come up, having them see them. It wasn't anywhere near the, the end and the culminating event for the seniors at all. It was just a matter of getting that information out to them and in their hands.
Is there, I know there was a group of parents or a pair, or a... Is there, I, I know there was a, a group of parents or a pair, or a parent that was, uh, maybe this is what Gina is referring to. I don't know. That was attempting to organize a neighborhood, neighborhood by neighborhood parades for the seniors. Is there any reason why we can't? Hold that on our school campus? So there's in one place. Um, you know, have the parents or families park in the parking spaces and that allow the seniors to parade around the campus? I mean. Uh, it seems to be something that, that, that's important to, to the graduates and their families. Uh, I think it would be a nice gesture, a nice way to honor them. Um, is it something? Maybe on the, that June 4th date, which was supposed to be their graduation, they could host that, we could host that at, on our school campus?
That's the date that they're planning on doing that parade now. And the way that they have it set up is. Each neighboring fire department is, that's going to be the meeting spot for any of the children in that area. And, um, they're going to take them around. Um, but what we were told and, and Erin can probably attest to that is that. They're concerned about the liability of everybody being together and not keeping a social distance in the parking lot. And, and Chrisa can probably elaborate on more of that as well. And that was the concern with why it wasn't going to be on the grounds of the high school.
Yeah. I understand that. I, you know, I'm.
Yeah, we had that discussion.
They're actually putting that together now.
Well, one of the things they brought up.
I'm sorry, I think everybody's talking about.
That Mr. Lick had sent out, got out. An email Mr. Lick sent out, got sent out to the public. Where I guess they're going to have the students pick up their, um, uh, their graduate, their graduation information and stuff and their diplomas. On June 4th, which would conflict with, with the parents are planning. And it also, some of them aren't happy because it's sort of is the final thing. Like, well, here's your diploma. Goodbye. See you later. Is there a way that maybe we could tweak that, that we hold on to diplomas? Up until the, the, as close to the drop dead date as possible. Except for the students who need them and they can contact Chad if they need them to go into the military or for school or whatever. That maybe, cause I, I, I respect where they're coming from because it's, you know, once you get your diploma, that's it. You know, and, and that just seems, some parents perceive this as a really crappy way to, for their kids to move forward and I agree with them.
I don't think it's in our, I, I'm sorry, Dr. Hoover.
Go ahead.
No, uh, the parade is.
I was the intent of it. That was never the intent of it, Dave.
Oh, I know, Doc, I know that. It's about perception and I understand where they're coming from on that. To make, because it's, you know, I has a bunch of messages because remember the, these kids that are graduating are. The same kids I've known since they were three years old. They played soccer with my daughter since then. The parents are. Rightly worried and they want to see their kids have a graduation. So, I mean, it's not something finalized. It's like, okay, well, if you really want your diploma earlier. Call Mr. Lick up. He'll coordinate it. We got our fingers crossed to have. As close to a normal graduation bed, depending on what the governor says or does. And we'll move forward because their biggest concern on June 4th was. That I think they're all meeting at the fire departments at 5:30 and they're going to have their local parades with the fire department at six. And I think that the email that got out to the public, they saw it was, there was a conflict with them doing this. So. It's like, I don't think, I don't think anybody's doing anything wrong like that. It's. You know, sometimes you have to think through some other people's opinions. We do need to listen to them.
Does anybody have anything else?
No, I mean, if we can touch back at some point and discuss it, Dr. Hoover, maybe. I know that the teachers and, and a lot of the parents would love to, you know, um, try to do something on the high school campus if, if it would be allowed. If they could somehow merge these two together when they come to pick it up or if they need to stop and pick something up, if they could arrange something with the teachers. Uh, maybe it's something we can try to, to work out, you know?
What would, what would prohibit us from doing something like that? Chrisa, is there something legally that we would be? Have to look into for that? Cause I know we tried this once before and it didn't pan out.
With the parade issue? But if we're going to get diplomas out early, that's not a problem. I mean, that happens. A lot of kids don't even come to graduation. They come and pick up their diplomas. So that's not an issue. The issue with the parade when we talked about it. Was that was when the school was involved in sponsoring it. It's my understanding that we are not involved. I think some of those concerns at that time was, um, making sure we got in everybody's area of town. Um, enrolling road closures in coordination with the borough. I think the borough at the time did not think we could handle. Such a large parade during this crisis, whether they had personnel elsewhere. Um, and being able to get the road closures through by, um, the state in enough time. Um, and then there was also issues of people being afraid that multiple people would show up in the vehicle. And that multiple people would get out of vehicles or that that would encourage people to, to line the roadways and gather. So I think there was some concern. Um, not only by us, but by borough and state officials at the time. And I believe that's why. We didn't move forward in doing the parade, uh, ourselves.
Thank you. And I just, I just want everybody to know, we, we did make the effort to do that. So everybody knows that the effort was made.
We spoke, Erin and I, Ms. White and I spoke with the insurance provider. We got, uh, an okay from them. On both the school district side and the borough side to move forward. We had a waiver drafted. Uh, Mr. Lick had already went through and gotten a sign up sheet with the rules and regulations done. So we did put a lot of work into that. Unfortunately, we were just never able to coordinate that with the other governmental entities due to the, to the pandemic and. The fire department was always willing to help us out and obviously they still are more appreciative for that. Um, it was just the taking away the police at that time, um, from the roads, um, and getting the roads on a rolling closure approved by the state. Was the hang up with, with our issue because of course we wouldn't have done multiple parades like they're doing in areas. We were going to do one large one to go through both Duquesne, Whittaker and. Uh, West Mifflin. And that also caused some intergovernmental issues with talking with the officials at Duquesne and Whittaker.
Right, right. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
All right, um, information items?
Yeah, yes, Mr. President. There's two tonight. The first one is. Congratulations to Kelly Bandic, second grade teacher Claire Borden. For securing a $1,000 distance learning grant from Donors Choose. Ms. Bandic will use the funds to continue STEAM and literacy learning activities by purchasing books and a terrarium kits for her students. B, congratulations to the middle school for placing first in the entire country. With the highest number of study island questions answered correctly per active student. In addition, four of the top 10 middle school students in the country were West Mifflin students. First place was Aiden Catterall. Fifth place was James Hoover. Eighth place was Ryan Abu. In 10th place was Haley Jeans. That concludes my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Uh, Board Secretary Business Manager's report. You're muted, Joe.
Okay, thanks, Tony. Thank you, Mr. President. I would respectfully ask for a motion second and approval on the following items. Um, I'll, I'll make the motion, then read them. Um, and then we'll go on from there. Uh, first one. Under Board of Directors, Items A, 1 through 4 on pages 1 and 2. Uh, the first one is to approve Sarah Butko is the district's treasurer for next year. She was, as you recall, she was, um. Put in after our treasurer with PNC Bank departed. She has done a fantastic job. This past month, we had, oh, um, everything done we needed to do on the first day of May, which was pretty impressive. Uh, the second is ratifying a memorandum of understanding with the West Mifflin Federation of Teachers pertaining to virtual learning. Dr. Hoover, would you like to expand upon that?
Um, basically that was. A, um, our agreement between the AFT and the district. Just provide some protections for teachers that they're going to do live, uh, Zoom lessons and so forth, uh, with their students and their families.
And if you recall, this is going to be backdated to the beginning of when this pandemic occurred on March 13th. The teachers have come forward with us and wanted some clarification. And, uh, that's why we weren't able to get it on last month, but we're able to move forward this month and they have signed it and sent it to Dr. Hoover.
Okay, item number three, it's recommended the board hire Dr. P. Emory Darkangelo. To conduct a superintendent search at the rate of $85 an hour pending approval from Peasars and execution of a mutually agreeable contract. And item number four, it's recommended that the board adopt the Camp Hollow Road Property Consolidation Subdivision Plan. As its plan of lots and irrevocably dedicated all streets and other property identified for dedication on the plan. To the borough of West Mifflin. This adoption and dedication shall be binding upon the corporation. And upon its successors in a signees. Um, we need to make this motion so we then can sign. The drawings and then continue the next steps to receive, um, to sell that property and, and get paid. Are there any questions?
Do I have any mo, do I have a motion?
Motion?
Motion by Mr. Alexandrov. Second by Mr. Marshall. Are there any questions or comments? Roll call.
I have a question.
Go, Mr. Blazevich.
I just, the, just so I understand number four. Is this, is this is to, um, so we own the property as the school district and then this would be conferring the property to the borough?
Now, this, um, as, as you recall, we had, um, the lot subdivided and, um.
I believe it's the, it's the parcel which contains our maintenance garage, correct?
Yeah, we had a, we had a lot consolidation and then a subdivision. So this is actually us. Signing the subdivision which, which we will retain 1.5 acres and, um, the other parcel will be about 25 acres.
If you recall that, there was. Yeah, there was multiple parcels there. We put them all together and then we had, um, uh, Ms. Wells go out with Dr. Hoover and take. Cut out the portion that our, our garages on. That was passed by the borough. We now have to get it signed and filed with the county. Once that happens, I'm going to come to you, um, and ask that we file tax exoneration because unfortunately. The, that property was never filed as tax exempt and we want to clean that up so that we can move forward with it.
Okay, so, so basically we keep the maintenance property and the rest goes up, can go up for sale afterwards?
Correct.
Yes, we're, we're currently under the agreement with, um, the turnpike. So they are buying it. This is just a step we need to take. And with a few other steps to actually make that transaction happen.
Does anybody have any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern. Mrs. Ahern, you're muted again.
Who? Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Castellnic.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And D'Scenzo.
Yes.
B, finance, 1 through 5 on pages 2. I'm going to attempt to share the screen here and go through a brief, uh, budget presentation. So let's see. If it works. Okay, hold on. Okay, can you guys all see it and hear me?
Correct, yes.
Yes.
Okay, this is the budget presentation for 2021, the school district general fund budget. Okay, the 2021 budget goals are, are what they usually are. Number one is to preserve the educational plan. Two, to approve a balanced budget, which we will. And three, to attempt to have a positive fund balance, which may be. A little tricky. The budgetary highlights, there is a tax increase of .88 mils. That would set the millage rate at 25.3765. Revenues are projected at $54,77,421. Expenditures projected at 57,995,350. The difference of $3,917,929 will be financed by fund balance, fund transfers and the selling of fixed assets. The fund transfers will be a million dollars from the capital projects fund as we had discussed. The sell of the fixed assets would be the Camp Hollow Road property that we just discussed and the property at the high school. Which we'll, we're going to get $192,000 for through the turnpike. We agreed to that last month. That totals 848,000 and the fund balance that we would use, the balance would be $2,69,929. Now, keep in mind, obviously the actual fund balance that we use. Is going to vary depending upon what our actual revenue is and what our actual expenses end up being at the end of the year. Total costs are increased by 1.83, 1,832,460 million. From the 2019, 2020 budget costs. Revenues are estimated to decrease by 1,274,247. Our debt service increase will be 154,482 dollars from the previous year. Special ed, special education costs will increase by 1.54 million. The Peasars rate increases from 34.51% from 34.29. Healthcare increased at 2.5%. Dental, 6%. Vision, 7%. Now, the initial projection of the healthcare increase, which we're going to talk about later in the, in the meeting, uh, was initially 3.5%. Ashik had an emergency board of director meeting on Friday. They lowered the rate by 1%. And the professional personnel contribution rates to the healthcare plan. Have increased to 8.5% from 7.5%. So, um, these are, these are some of the revenue issues that I want to discuss. The school district has lost 28,825,122 dollars since the beginning of January 1st, 2019. Now, that is a combination of real estate tax appeals and most recently the turnpike coming through and inquiring properties. And, and getting them tax exempt and thus taking them off of our, um, tax rolls. So that equals a loss of 706, 706, 100, 706,000. 115, uh, dollars in assets. The West Mifflin five-year average collection rate is 92.29%. The collection rate used to determine the tax revenue for West Mifflin and Whittaker's real estate revenue was decreased. The, I apologize. The collection rate of 85% was used for West Mifflin. And Whittaker's real estate revenue was decreased approximately 5% from what was collected this year. There's also an estimated approximate loss of 10% in all other local sources and 20% in amusement taxes. This is all related to the COVID-19, people not working and this situation that we're currently in. In order to, to mitigate expenses, uh, the administration froze all non-essential spending on April 1st of this year. In anticipation for the low, lost local revenues, which we have already seen in order to protect the fund balance. Cuts were made wherever possible in this budget and all options to reduce costs will need to be explored in the coming year. The top cost drivers, which, which are always the case, employee benefits, including retirement, healthcare costs. Special education and student placements and debt service. So the. The estimated increase in revenue with a tax increase would be if we were to collect 100% of that. Would collect 921,893. we'd collect 921,893. If we had a collection rate of 90%, which is the five-year average or near the five-year average, that would be 829,704 and an 85% collection rate is $783,609. So where are we compared to January of 2019? We lost $706,115. A tax increase at 100% is 921,893 and using an 85% collection rate is $783,609, which just that increase nets us $77,494 from where we were beginning of January 1st, 2019. So what does it mean to, to the homeowner? Well, the county medium home values, which is posted on the Allegheny County website, a .88 mil increase in West Mifflin is $70,000. That would increase our taxes by $61.60. Whittaker's medium home value is $47,050. That would increase taxes by $41.40 and if a, if your home was assessed at $100,000 in both burrows, that increase would be $88. In conclusion, there's no other time in history that one can look back on and gauge to protect, project the effect that COVID-19 will have upon local revenue sources. District will explore all valuable options in the coming year. One thing that will not suffer is the education of our children, which is and always will be our top, our priority. And I, I have to thank Denny Smar for his guidance and friendship up to this point. He's been readily available to me whenever I need him. We've talked often and he continues to be there when I call. And that's it. Okay, any questions? No questions on that?
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, we have something like 1.7 in a fund balance for ABM for projects. Do we have to spend that or can we put that towards the deficit that we have right now for, if it's not necessarily needed to be spent?
Chrisa.
Those funds, this is Gary Mata. The only use of those funds are for either building-related issues, construction, those type of issues. We could use a portion of that possibly for buying some technology equipment and those items as well. But it cannot go just into the general fund, cannot go to salaries. That, those funds were financed strictly for building-type issues.
And that would allowed us to, a couple of years ago, there was a million dollars transferred out of the general fund into the capital projects fund in anticipation to do upgrades. We've obviously done a lot and we, we do have that extra money to continue to do upgrades. So that million dollars really isn't needed. We don't need to sit it there and, and I believe we, we can bring it back to the general fund and still accomplish our goals.
I have a question, Joe. This is Matt. So, so after all of the, after the tax increase and the using up of the fund balance and let's say everything that you've predicted kind of holds, holds its line with the percentages and everything. At the end of next, at the end of next school year, we have a zero fund balance, correct?
I, I think, you know, it's still a little early to try to guess what the fund balance will be. I'll have a much clearer picture at the June meeting. We've, we've made a, we're, we're saving a lot of money right now. So, so I, I mean, it's, it's, it's nearly impossible for anybody in my position or any governmental position to guess what the impact of, of the COVID-19 is going to have. So, you know, I, I've talked to a lot of other business managers. I've, I've consulted with Brian Campoff, the borough business manager. Everybody's around the same area. Obviously, if you have a stronger fund balance, you, you could estimate less revenue and be okay. You know, this is just something that's going to have to play out and we're going to probably, you know, as, as it progresses, try to, you know, see other areas where we might be able to save a little bit of money.
I, I just have one more question. If, if we, if COVID-19 did not happen, would we be raising taxes?
Well, if, I, I would think probably to some degree, if, if you looked at the revenue that we've lost since on assessed values now. Granted, Jonathan Hess will get a new set of numbers, but those were assessed values since January of 19. This tax increase is kind of just bringing us, bringing us back to that point. So you factor in special educational costs increasing, those two items alone weren't a tax increase. So if, if the COVID-19 ever happened, we'd definitely be in a better position, but I, I believe that there still would have been an increase.
And then I guess I have a third question. I'm sorry. So what do we, this time next year, are we going to be doing this again? I mean, is this, is, I know, I'm asking you to look into a crystal ball, but best guess, it sounds to me like we're at a zero fund balance again this time next year. And then depending on what happens between now and then with, you know, technology budgets and all the budgets that we have, we could be in another deficit situation 365 days from now and then we're doing this again. So I, I don't know. I'm just, that worries me.
Well, one thing I, I can tell you that, that we won't pass is, is you know, we passed the resolution that said we want, would not raise taxes above the Act 1 index, which, which turns out to be .88 mils. So we're not doing that. As crazy as it may sound, I'm going to start on next year's budget within the next week or two. We will be, and when I say start on it, uploading personnel costs and, and getting that ready. We will be passing a preliminary budget this year. We, we will not, I will have something ready if the board, you know, wants to, to entertain a preliminary budget. We will, or we could pass the index, but the budget will be ready for next year. And I think we'll, 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 we'll have a much clearer picture then. You know, I mean, this, this could get a lot worse. It could get a lot better. I could be underestimating. I could be overestimating. I mean, it, it's, it's just, it's, it's just impossible to, to even, you know, gauge. But I think by next December, we're going to have a much clearer picture of where this district is financially and what we need to do going forward. So I'm sorry, I can't have a definitive answer, but, but again, we'll have a much clearer picture in December.
Joe, does, does your budget have taken into factor if we get relief or grants after the COVID-19?
No, we, we are getting some money, which Dr. Hoover, you could comment. We, we do have plans for, to, to apply that to the one-to-one initiative. There may be additional, you know, funding sources from the federal state government. Let's hope so. And, you know, if that happens, unfortunately, I can't, I know the money we're getting now, we will spend. So, you know, we don't have a plan, a definitive plan to say how much and where we're going to spend. That's why it was not included in the budget. But let's just hope that, that there are additional revenue sources that, that we can find.
Joe, what happens when the rest of the homes are being taken by the turnpike? Have you figured in that when it's all said and done?
Yeah, I, I don't, I mean, I can only set the tax rate based on the current assessed values. I, I don't know how many more properties are going to take. Obviously, I, I'm hopeful that they're done or near done, but if they continue to take properties, that will obviously have a negative effect on any numbers that were presented this, that are going to be presented in the proposed budget.
Thanks. So if Kennywood doesn't open, what's, what's the loss for us? Do you have a number?
We, let's hope they open. It's, we received $300,000 this year from it. It was budgeted at 375. I took it back down to 300. I mean, any shortcomings are going to be, have, going to have to be made up with fund balance or, or other sources of income. It's, again, I, I, you know, hate to say that it's a best guess situation we're in. We've done everything, I've done everything that, you know, I, I cut everywhere that I could cut on an expense side, but you can't cut, cut personnel. You can't cut special education. You know, I, I cut supply budgets. We froze spending this year. There, there, I, I went over it at least, at least 10 times trying to find something I missed. There, there was nothing I missed and, you know, it's about as tight as I possibly could make it on an expense side.
How much does Century 3 Mall owe us in back taxes?
Chrisa.
So I think there's a lot of back taxes that I could pull it up, Nick, and I'll email it to you, but I think it's somewhere in the range of over $5,000 to $600,000 on the mall. Now, the Sears property, which is a separate parcel, also owes us for, I believe only two years back taxes and, and they're very similar in cost for the same amount. As you know, they're in bankruptcy. That's a litigation issue too, that I don't really want to get into in a public meeting because we are currently in that bankruptcy and we have a special counsel, Dave Valencic. And he just took a proposed settlement to the court. If we get approval, obviously that would be presented to the board for approval. That would get us some taxes in this year roughly between $400,000 and $500,000. I don't want anyone to count on that and I've had that conversation with Joe because the board hasn't approved that settlement. The board hasn't approved that settlement and this is just.
Well, I know that they, they owe us for about two or three, at least two years going back while they've been in bankruptcy.
They actually, the mall itself owes back from 2015. The Sears parcel only owes back, I believe, back to 17, 18.
JCPenney's part of the regular structure or is that something different?
JCPenney's is part of that. They are a leaseholder for, for the mall. I know I've heard the rumors too, that they were a separate parcel. I think people were confusing that with the Sears parcel, Nick.
I just want to make clear that they owe us money going back more for about a few years. If we get that in, that would be a help to us.
Well, certainly, that's why I, we've had that conversation with Joe and we, we certainly hope to anticipate that we would receive some funds over the next year of what that's going to be. I hope I'll know. It would be great if we knew before the final budget, but I don't, I don't know where they're at in the bankruptcy process and how long that takes as court is on hold right now. There are some virtual hearings being held in bankruptcy court. And I know that Mr. Valencic is set for a hearing in front of the judge, I believe, upcoming soon. And then he'll report that back to this board in an executive session.
Thank you.
And, and, you know, we, we obviously also have Emerson. That was not included, is a receivable. That was not in, in the, but in anywhere in there because I can't predict what we're going to get for it. So, you know, that's why I said that we'll have a clearer picture come December of, of these additional, you know, resources. I, I think it's bad practice to, you know, to put Emerson. I initially wanted to, but decided not to. And, and those are, those are.
My Emerson's not even listed yet, up for sale.
Correct. Mr., correct, Mr. Alexandrov. I spoke with Joe about that too. You charged our firm with getting the appraisal due to the COVID-19. That was on hold for now. We're moving forward with getting the appraisal and having Sandy meet the individual to allow him into the building so that he can get us an appraisal here and we can list the property.
Thinking of, of that, do we want to maybe with our long-term strategic planning committee come up, you know, maybe start thinking about how we're going to market that property and, and our plan of attack with that? Is it too early in the process to, to do that, Chrisa?
Um, I think we should see what it's worth first before you decide how you want to do that. Ultimately, you'll probably need two appraisals, but I think that, you know, there's multiple. I have a memo that I can send you with regard to how to sell school to ship property. I believe it would be very similar to the one I provided on the Camp Hollow Road property, if you recall, but I will change it not just for vacant land, but for a building. And there's multiple things you can do in multiple ways. So once we get the appraisal and I'll get you the memo and I'll present it to buildings and grounds at the next meeting, if that's appropriate, Miss White. And then you can make a recommendation. Then you can make a recommendation on how to proceed.
Sure, thank you.
All right. Well, Joe, I just want to say I appreciate your, your efforts and, and, you know, this is your first year for preparing the budget and, you know, with the circumstances that are surrounding us here, you know, I thought you did it and you've done a great job so far and I, you know, just want to say that, you know, I appreciate all your hard work and effort and I'm sure there's some challenges that, you know, you, you faced along the way and, you know, I know you mentioned last week you were there till 3:00 AM one night. So, you know, we, we appreciate that, you know, all your hard work.
I appreciate that, Tony.
I'd like to second that. The finance committee and the work that I've done with Joe. I mean, Joe, yesterday in his home, it was his daughter's birthday and the fire department was there and drove by their house and Joe was up at the school district here working. So, he missed out on his daughter's birthday. So happy birthday to her and, and thank you so much, Joe.
Thanks, Dave.
Yes, and thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Marshall. I just want to note that I know we had a little bit of a hard time uploading this yesterday and we did get it up a, a little bit late and there were some questions about that. That's just a recommendation made by our firm that we had presented to the office of open records. That's just a guideline. It's not a hard and fast rule or a law. And we are more than satisfied that everybody had time to make public comment. We received many of them. Even some of them were later today. Mr. DeSenzo did incorporate those into the meeting tonight. So I don't see any issue with that 30 minutes and I want to thank Joe for missing your daughter's birthday to come in to make sure that upload happened and the timing was appropriate.
Okay, so thanks, Chrisa. I appreciate that. Item number, number two is to approve the Still Center's 21, 2021 operating budget of $5,917,422. That's a protected cost of 6, 6,500 per student. That is a decrease. That's based on 675 students is their enrollment. The next one is approving the Still Center's workforce development budget. That's 116,500. There's, there's no cost to the district to do that. Number four is to approve the administrative budgets for Still Center area vocational technical school, $20,881 and then the southeastern area special schools, $11,917. And item number five is recommended the board transfer $32,267.91 from the construction fund to the capital projects fund to pay for the outstanding cloud cast invoices. We do not have checks for the construction fund, so we make these transfers. It, it wasn't worth buying checks. It was not cost prohibitive, but it was a waste of money with the handful of checks that would actually write. So we, we transfer it and write the checks out from that.
Hey, does anybody drive a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blazevich.
Second.
Second by Mr. Alexandrov. Do I have any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
No for one and five. Yes for two, three and four.
Okay, Blazevich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes, all but five.
Kastanik.
Yes, to all but five.
Marshall.
Yes, to all but five.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes, to all but five.
Yes, to all but five.
And De Senzo.
Yes.
All right, Mr. President, um, items two, three and four passed on a nine to zero vote. Item one passed on an eight to one vote. And number five failed, five to four.
Oh.
Is that, is that correct? Okay, Meg's sitting here with me to make sure I, I get it right. So, Chrisa.
How do we proceed forward?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have to pay these bills that are.
I don't understand.
I mean, number five was the thirty-two thousand two sixty-seven ninety-one.
Yeah, so, so, um, I, I'll tell you what, that was just a motion to make the transfer.
Yes.
I don't think it becomes an issue unless all the invoices, um, fail. I, I could probably arrange payment directly from the capital or the, uh, construction fund two nineteen.
That's correct, that's why it's just a transfer. And again, I will remind everybody that I believe that we have contractual obligations, um, to, uh, cloud cash for the outstanding payment, the work was already performed, is my understanding. You're not approving future work, I believe that the work was already approved and, uh, this is the bill, is my understanding.
Yes, that's correct.
So I remind you, um, that you have legal obligations as a school district to pay bills that you are contractually obligated to pay. Unless, uh, there's something that we need to raise in executive session that you believe that the work wasn't completed appropriately.
Okay, um, moving on to purchasing and contracting. Items one through ten on pages two and three. Number one is to renew the agreement with Nutrition, Inc., uh, provide food management services for the twenty twenty-one school year. This agreement is the third renewal of a four-year contract. And it's further recommended that the board approve the cafeteria fund budget. Number two, um, is to, uh, it's recommended the board approve the award for bids for the following companies of, for the twenty twenty-one school year. Them being the lowest responsible bidders and the most complete bidders according to specification as budgeted as, uh, presented. I, I have to, um, give a shout out to Kathy Evans. Um, this is a pretty time-consuming and tedious process. We, we did the RFPs, we collect them, and then she asked to enter all the data and, and you, and everybody was provided, uh, the results of, of the, um, companies that were the lowest bidders. Number three, it's recommended that the board accept the proposal from Big Sanitation entering an agreement for solid waste recycling removal disposal from July first, two thousand and twenty through July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. At a total cost of twenty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-six cents each year. Pending the execution is an agreement per budget as presented. Additional services will be billed at nineteen dollars and eighty-six, um, cents per cubic yard. Um, this represents no increase from the prior contract. They, they've not raised the rates. Um, contract will contain some modifications in it related to, obviously, we don't have to collect an Emerson and, and there'll be some adjustment, adjustments made, um, but that price is not increasing. It is recommended that number four, uh, board approve an agreement with Harris School Solutions for financial accounting software maintenance from July first, twenty twenty through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-one at a cost of nineteen thousand four hundred and forty dollars and seventy-five cents. This is the software that we do acquisitions through, um, payroll through, my budgeting through. Item number five, it's recommended the board approve a five-year contract with Terra Switch to provide virtual machine hosting at a monthly rate of five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to start as soon as possible. Now, this motion, um, was passed last month, the dollar amount was incorrect. Um, this is the correct amount for the contract. Um, I believe everybody's received the contracts and the documentation to go along with this. Item number six, it's recommended the board approve an agreement with Front, frontline placement technologies for the Aesop Personnel Service at a total cost of approximately eighty-two fifty fifteen from July first, twenty twenty through July, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, frontline placement is, um, that, that's our, uh, personnel software. We track everything with all the employees. Uh, item number seven, it's recommended the board approve an agreement with the Allegheny Intermeading Unit for Special Education Services during the twenty twenty-one school year for the cost schedule as budget per, per presented. Item number eight, it's recommended the board approve an agreement with Ford Business Machines for Technology Services from July first through twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. I have to note, um, that the first year price that was on the agenda, that was posted, uh, to the public was incorrect. Uh, that was a, a typo, uh, the first year price is a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars and not a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, all other dollar amounts are correct. And, um, that was part of Steve's presentation earlier in the meeting. Item number nine, it's recommended the board approve an agreement with Duke Solutions for eventual essentials pro software facility scheduling program from July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one at a cost of seven thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and six cents as presented as per budget. This is a software that, uh, we use to manage the rental of the facilities. Obviously, if we're still in a COVID situation, that, that may have an effect. But, you know, we, we have to be ready to go, um, should, should things turn out better than we may think. And I, item numbers ten is just approving the following revised ASIC, uh, rates. Uh, we did approve that in March, but since they lowered the rates by one percent, these are the new rates and it would be appropriate to, uh, approve the revised rates.
All right, uh, thanks, Mr. Asper, does anybody, or do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Mattis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marshall, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Uh, number eight. Mr. Blazovich, is this a recommendation by you and the technology committee for number eight?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
And I was going to ask you the same thing, Matt, and I appreciate your professional knowledge you use to help, uh, build this, change our IT structure, you, you know, for the rest of us who can't run computers. It's very much appreciated, thank you.
Sure, yeah, and I, I'd like to extend a thanks to Steve Fort and his presentation tonight. It's a, you know, get, a, a, as you all recall, back in January, I think we talked about, you know, getting Ford involved initially. Um, and we did an initial six-month contract because we weren't sure what we were, who, you know, who were, we were going to get to help us. And, uh, Steve's done a great job. And, um, you know, this, this recommendation, this plan is part of a, a broader comprehensive IT strategy for the, for the, uh, school district. And, um, you know, with, with, with item number eight, I understand it looks like a, a rather, rather large ticketed item. It's actually going to save us around two hundred and forty thousand dollars over the five years. And it's also going to provide additional flexibility and, uh, resources. Uh, as Steve noted earlier, we're going to be adding around eleven hundred and fifty devices, which is an increase of sixty-nine percent over today's quantity of devices at the school district that we're going to have to support from an IT standpoint. Um, so this is going to provide us additional flexibility and able to support the increased volume of devices.
Uh, uh, well, Chrisa or Gary, I have a legal question. Um, we had originally done an RFP to look at outsourcing our IT. And we, I believe, interviewed four or five companies and selected Ford. Um, going forward with this longer-term contract, are there any issues that we didn't do any outside bidding? Or is this, since this is a professional service, it's okay?
No, it's considered a professional service, Mr. Marshall. Additionally, we did an extensive search, if you recall, at the beginning of the year. And we only did a six-month to get us through the end of the year until the new members could become more acclimated. We knew that Mr. Blazovich was coming on with his expertise, was the head of the technology committee at the time. So it, um, only makes sense, I think we anticipated if we were happy with them, we would be going into a longer contract. If we weren't, uh, we would be looking back at one of those other individuals that had applied. Uh, also, I just want to be clear that this contract does have a, a, I believe, a sixty-day out period. So that anytime if we become, for any reason, uh, feel that this is not working for the district, uh, we can certainly get appropriate notice and, uh, get, uh, remove ourselves from the contract.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
Is this something that we could sign for a year as opposed to five?
That would have to be a question for Ford, I believe that they based their proposal on a five-year contract. If you would want to ask them about a one-year, they would agree to a one-year, that, that would be, um, a question for Ford. I believe that they're still on, on the, on the call. Um, but I, I would have to say that, um, if it wouldn't be the same prices in the proposal, we would probably have to table this and vote on it next month.
Well, I, I mean, Matt could jump in because like Mr. Marshall mentioned, he's the expert in this field. But for those of us who have been a part of the technology committee meetings, uh, throughout this entire process, I think Ford did a, a really nice job of laying out a, a long-term, five-year plan for our district. Um, and, you know, a lot of the things that they want to accomplish cannot be accomplished within a, the six-month window that we've given them to this point and additionally just going year to year. I know, I don't think this is something that we should want to face ourselves with a decision every twelve months. Um, you know, so I don't know, Matt, if you, if you have anything to add to that. I think that would be the advantageous reason to, to, to do a longer-term deal with them.
Yeah, I think, I think it just, um, there, so, so, so there is a bit of leap of faith. But I do believe, you know, over the past six months, they've proved themselves to be, um, you know, capable and, and, um, and skilled in helping us. I believe the plan that's forth in front of us, it's going to require a, a bench of skills that we do not possess today in the IT, um, group at the, at the district. And so this is going to allow Ford to bring in, you know, experts in certain skilled areas, uh, for certain projects to help us get projects completed. And then they can send those resources back to Ford to then do projects for some other school district. But, you know, it's, it, 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 it broadens our bench, it provides additional flexibility in able to staff up and staff down during critical periods during the school year, such as start or the summer. And, um, it also will allow our current IT staff who have a tough time taking PTO, uh, especially during the school year. But we really need them also here in the summer too, because that's when we can get a lot of our work done, um, and while nobody's in the building. So, so I think it's just going to add a whole layer of additional flexibility and capabilities for us. But, um, uh, it, it's up to Ford if they want to, you know, I, I'd like the sixty-day out is what I, I asked to have put into the agreement. Because if at any point in time we aren't satisfied, we can very well invoke that and start to look for, uh, a replacement, you know. So it's not necessarily a five-year contract. I mean, the terms lock us in for five years for the dollar figures. But every year, we won't know what their new price is going to be if we go into a five, a, a annual renewal. They could say, hey, you know what, we spent two hundred thousand dollars at West Niflin last year. So next year, our bill's going to be three hundred thousand dollars. And it makes it hard for us to predict and budget, and Joe's time to predict and budget a little bit more difficult. So I'm okay with seeing the pricing out that far because we can budget and predict what we're going to end up spending in, in this space. And the sixty-day out clause is, is what is, is sort of the safety, safety, uh, catch for, for me.
Well, and I think one of the things that should be pointed out is prior to the current board, uh, we had an assessment done of our IT infrastructure and it came back horrific. But it also laid out things we needed to repair. And I think in this past six months, Ford, working along with our, our, in, our information technology committee, have worked through a lot of these issues like Steve that put out earlier. Because it's not something where they're just some five-by-night company that's throwing, oh, we'll come in and do this for you. We've identified our problems independently, we've presented them to Ford and they're working along with other ideas to improve our infrastructure. Because it was so bad before that, that, that we weren't having the personal information of our students as tightly locked in as it should have been. We had them come in and try to break into our system and they did it horrifically easily. And Ford, I believe, has done a lot to move away from that and tighten our, our kids' information and our employees' information.
I don't disagree that, that Steve did an excellent job with everything that he's done. My concern is for the future, the uncertainty of where our revenue is going to come from and the way things are changing. That's my concern.
I think, I, I, I agree with you, Gina. Um, that there's, there's a, there's a marginal, I think, five percent increase year over year in this agreement, um, which is predictable and it's semi-reasonable. If, if we have major changes, we have a sixty-day, uh, you know, ability to give them a sixty days' notice to get out of this agreement. If we do an annual, I really do, with, you know, I would, I would hate to have to renegotiate every year with Ford. And then they come back and say, you know what, we're going to do a twenty-five percent increase this year. And now we're really struggling because we have to, we have to figure out where we're going to get that twenty-five percent from then. Where here in this situation, we can see at least out five years, yeah, it's a marginal increase every year. The, the total package is expensive, don't get that wrong, but it's spread out over five years. But it's the predictability that I like about that.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, roll call. Mr. Asper.
I didn't unmute myself.
We, we already did.
There was a motion, there was a second, Meg is here in the office to make sure that, um, she's got a motion by Matt, uh, Mr. Mattis and a second by Mr. Marshall.
Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
No for C one, yes for everything else.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes, to all but eight.
Kostanik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And De Senzo.
Yes.
All right, Mr. President, all items with the exception of one and eight passed on a nine to zero vote. One and eight passed on a eight to one vote.
All right, thank you. That takes us to the minutes.
Yes, item D, five D minutes, number one on page three.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Kostanik.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Ahern, any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostanik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And De Senzo.
Yes. Reports.
Item five E, reports, numbers one through five on pages three and four.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. White.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blazovich, any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostanik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And De Senzo.
Yes.
Uh, item five F, refunds subtracted from expenditures, number one on page four.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. White.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Kostanik, questions, comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kostanik.
Yes.
Marshall. Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And DeSenzo.
Yes.
Item 5G invoices, numbers one through four on pages four and five. I'll go through them briefly. One A being C are from legal tax service for tax liens and filing fees. Numbers, or letters D and E were to pay the Post Gazette and the Valley Mirror where we had to advertise for the bids. F is for the AIU Act One mailing administrative fee. Letter G is Jane D. Simone for arbitration services. Letter H is our monthly retainer for our solicitors. That's under one. Number two, under the Capital Projects Funds. These are the three invoices for CloudCast dated October, November, December, and December of last year. I have no idea why we just got these invoices that we do owe the money. Item A was for materials and labor to help hook the scoreboard up. Item B was, we had purchased, Dr. Hoover purchased a shipping container that was placed at the stadium, the store excess inventory of the track stuff and whatever. So that was to prep the site and gravel to create a, a nice base to put that shipping container in, which is kind of large. C was labor and materials to hook the air conditioning in the stadium home locker room. And, and item D was the same thing but for the press box. Three A is ABM solution, phase two, application nine. And number four is bills payable, which includes the P cards.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Alexandrov, second by Mr. Blazovich. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a comment. I understand we have a legal obligation to pay the bill, but I expect that bill to be sent to our office in a timely fashion.
That's my question. This bill should have been presented six to nine months ago after they did the work. We used, we did, we used the locker rooms and scoreboards the whole football season, then 10 months later, we get the billing.
Joe, did this, this sounds similar to something that we had on another agenda. Is, are we, I just want to, this isn't.
It is the same thing.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not duplicating anything.
Is this a double payment?
Well, obviously, before we would go, go ahead and, and, you know, pay that, this was sent, Dr. Hoover, they sent these invoices to you.
That's correct.
Yeah, so obviously, before we pay it, it'll, it'll, I'll vet it one more time.
Can anyone that's produced where we, I mean, I don't know if you have the information in front of you, I certainly do not, and I don't think Joe does, but just, you know, so we don't double pay them? If we could provide Joe with the minutes or prior agenda where this appeared on?
And Joe, we could approve the bill under the condition that it was not a duplicate bill.
Yeah, yeah, obviously.
The, the problem may have been that it was approved to be paid in the past and never paid also.
But it's the, it's number five under the finance also on this agenda.
Yeah, you're probably.
If it was ever approved before and not.
That's, that's a transfer.
Biggest issue is to find out if this invoice was ever paid or not. That may be why it was resubmitted.
My suspicion is, my suspicion is exactly what Mr. Mattis said, is that it was probably approved before, but we didn't pay it, so they resubmitted the bill. And under finance, Mrs.
I understand it's the transfer.
That was the transfer to pay it, it's not the.
I see.
Well, you know, obviously, it's been a pretty busy couple of weeks, but, but I was planning on, you know, if that were the case, to, you know, vet it one more time, you know, prior to submission. I, I would hope that they would not bill us for the same thing, but I'll make sure that, you know, provided we pass it, if we, if, if for some reason it was paid, which I can't find, I checked the journals from the Capital Projects Fund. Obviously, Denny was here, I checked that first. I did not see any payments of those amounts. And we may have transferred that money, and it got lost in the shuffle somehow. Some, sometimes, you know, that does happen, we're, we're dealing with so much. But, you know, this will definitely be vetted one more time. And I'll, and I'll report back to the board to let you know. But I don't believe it's been paid, because I, I can't find the payment. Are, are we good?
Yeah, I believe so. We have a motion and a second, correct?
Yeah, a motion by Mr. Alexandrov, and seconded by Mr. Blazovich.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Then roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes, on one, three, and four, no on two.
Blazovich.
Yes, pen, but make sure we're not double paying these people, that's all.
Yeah, I definitely will. Engler.
Yes, but to two.
Kastanik.
I'm going to vote yes, but I want to make sure that that bill was not double paid.
Okay. Marshall.
Yes, the one, three, and four noted too.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes, making sure that it, we're not double paying, please. Thank you.
And DeSenzo.
Yes, make sure we don't double pay, Joe, in case you haven't heard that yet.
Well, you know, just, just so you know, I'm, you know, I, when we got these, I took these bills over to Kathy, and I said, Kathy, did we pay these? And she couldn't find it, but, so I'm fairly certain, but stranger things have happened. We will check one more time. You know, the way it works, if she goes to enter an invoice, it, she could see the invoices that were played, paid to CloudCast. So on the off chance that it did, this was a mistake on their end, she, she has access to it right in front of her, and, and she's very good at picking up on stuff. She questions everything, brings a lot of things to my attention, and, you know, I'm, you know, it gives me great relief to have that second set of eyes on everything.
Joe, please tell CloudCast that we need these bills when the work is done, not six months later.
Well, well, if, if, if there, I, I didn't go back and look at the other, it is possible that it got passed, and we were just negligent somehow, and it, and it fell through the crack. So again, I'll, I'll report both of those issues back to, A, if this was passed previously, since it sounds familiar to some, and, and B, to make sure that we aren't double paying these bills.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
H?
Mr. President, all items passed on a nine-to, nine-to-zero vote with the exception of G, two, A, B, C, and D, which passed on a six-to-three vote. Okay, moving along, item 5H, requisitions, other, numbers one through two on page five. There were two executive sessions on May 11th and May 19th, which were properly documented.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahern, second by Mrs. White. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kastanik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And DeSenzo.
Yes.
Mr. President, that so concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Esper. District Operations takes us down to Superintendent's Report.
Yes, Mr. President, under Superintendent's Report, I'm going to be asking for a motion, second approval for seven A, one through four. These settlement agreements were actually on the agenda last month, but once again, we had a motion, and there was not a second. This was picked up again by Meg Arbisak, I guess when she was doing the minutes or taking the recording, so we have to ratify these once again.
Okay, is that all that's included in this motion? Or you're not, are you doing?
Uh, there's nothing else, it goes.
I just didn't know if you were, you usually do B and C all together, I didn't know.
There is no B and C.
I might, I might have skipped ahead, hold on one second.
Well.
On page six, that's what, I was just curious, sometimes you group them together, Dr. Hoover, that's all, I'm just making sure. All right.
Tony, they're, they're, they're on there, but there's.
I got you, I got you, all right. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahern.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mattis. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kastanik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And DeSenzo.
Yes.
Professional personnel, just one item, eight A1, which is a leave of absence.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. White, second by Mr. Marshall. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kastanik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And DeSenzo.
I'm going to abstain on that one, Mr. Esper, being that it's my sister, and want to congratulate her on her new baby girl.
So noted, Mr. President, that passed on an eight-to-zero vote with one abstention.
That's Uncle Tony now.
Where's that take us to?
Non-certified person.
Non-certified personnel.
Under non-certified personnel, just one item again, it's nine E, other.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Alexandrov.
Second.
Second by Mrs. White. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
No.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kastanik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And this, DeSenzo.
Yes.
Mr. President, that passed on an eight-to-one vote.
Thank you, Mr. Esper. Athletic personnel?
Yes, Mr. President, under athletic personnel, just two items, 10B, where there's one and two, and those are two resignations.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Ahern.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mattis. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Roz Gahn, for everything you did for the kids. He's a great educator, and he's stepping aside as the high, the cross-country coach.
Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kastanik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
DeSenzo.
Yes. Substitutes?
Yes, Mr. President, under substitutes, I'm asking for a motion, second approval for 11A, one and two.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Kastanik. Second by Mrs. Ahern. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
Alexandrov.
Yes.
Blazovich.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Kastanik.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And DeSenzo.
Yes. I think that concludes your report, Dr. Hoover.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you. Board Presidents' Correspondence, there is none at this time. Executive Session Discussion was held a few days ago where we discussed legal matters and personnel. Board Reports, does anybody have any board reports?
Still Center, the meeting was held at beginning of May, we approved the budgets for Mon Valley and Still Center. They were presented night to the school board, and everything was approved.
Thank you, Mr. Alexandrov.
I have Buildings and Grounds report, please. Homewood Elementary, the unit vents are in progress. The high school is all done except the Chiller. Clara Barton, all done except the Chiller startup. And Phase Four right now is currently under review, and I'm going to be scheduling a Buildings and Ground Committee meeting within the next week or two.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Anybody else have anything?
For Finance Committee, we had a meeting earlier. The one thing, as we look through this budget, it's just a preliminary budget, it's not a final budget. Over the next month or so, I think we, as an entire board, should look at opportunities to save money and try to minimize this, between the stuff on 43 that we have to deal with now, we're not like the other district on the other side of 51 adding homes, they add 400, we lose 250, that's something that we got to address, as well as the loss in revenue and praying to God that the federal government and the state government step up and help out us and other districts that have been put in a bad situation.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Anybody else?
I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Matt.
Okay, Gina.
No, I was just going to say, prior to the pandemic that we were faced with, I was actually meeting with Mr. Esper and Mr. Solomon to discuss long-term strategic planning. So we have put together some ideas, so hopefully we'll be able to put together something soon and get everybody involved with all the committees and, and start to set some realistic, long-term goals for everybody.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Engler. Anybody else?
I just wanted to say that the Technology Committee met earlier, I think it was this week, and we talked about, it was basically the same presentation that Steve gave earlier. Just wanted to let everybody know that.
Thank you, Mr. Blazovich.
Mr. President, while we were hearing committee reports, I did pull up the ProSoft software, and those bills were not paid.
Thank you, Mr. Esper.
You mean the CloudCast, which one?
Yes, yes, the CloudCast bills were not paid. I'm looking at a screen, it shows every bill that was paid in this school year, and there are no duplicates, they are in there pending approval.
Maybe we could, maybe we could look back and see if, you know, like Mr. Mattis mentioned, maybe they, you know, it was on a prior agenda, and we just haven't paid it yet or something.
Yeah.
I don't know, we'll, we'll look into it.
That they have not been paid.
Thank you.
CloudCast, correct, not ProSoft.
No, I was looking at ProSoft for CloudCast, the CloudCast bills were not paid.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Solicitors' Report?
I have no report at this time, my report was given in the executive session.
Thank you. Old business? New business?
Just two, two things real quick I want to bring up. First off, I'd like to thank Major Harbula and.
DeSarbo.
To.
Sergeant DeSarbo.
Yeah, Sergeant DeSarbo, thank you. Two great military veterans of West Mifflin citizens and Dave Jackal and Mike Mauer pointed out about, you know, ways to recognize the, the students that we have are going forward in the military and Johnny Mattis and I both saw it and it's, that's really a nice valid observation. We both emailed the rest of you guys on the board and as you guys all know, and the public will hopefully know soon, that we're stepping up on how we recognize events, but the vets, excuse me, both short-term and long-term, to sort of celebrate what these folks are doing because, you know, West Mifflin traditionally is a very pro-military and pro-veteran borough and this little bit of recognition for these students who are moving forward to protect our country, the least we can do is recognize them and thank them. Secondly, do we need to take a motion based on what we receive from Representative Courts on ways to come up with a plan to be formally submitted by the school district to the governor? To ask just in case, I mean, hopefully we're green by June or July or whatever, that we don't need to do it, but just in case we need to do it, to have a plan that's in place and it's been approved, is that something that we have to take a formal action on or could administration handle it?
Yeah, I would assume.
Dave, technically like Chris just said before, if there's a new motion, wouldn't there have to be a subject where the, where the public would be able to talk? So that would put us a 30-day.
Right, and that's, I'm hoping administration can handle it.
Yes, I also want to tell you, Mr. Marshall, that you are going to be required, they put out a set of guidelines, Dr. Hoover, I don't know if he emailed them to everybody, but he emailed me his action plan, I believe, two days ago that I did review. So we do have an action plan for COVID-19 in the upcoming school year. Additionally, we probably are going to have to discuss appointing a emergency coordinator with the state and that person also will be the point person for any staff that has any issues. So it will have to be a highly confidential position, so we should probably talk about that. I don't really know what committee that would go to, probably policy, I would think, Mr. Mattis. You know, you're in charge of policy and we've been trying to have one anyways, so that would probably be a good thing to talk about because we might have to put in some emergency policies and procedures, obviously, over the summer for the upcoming school year as we move forward.
Well, and I shared the email from Representative Courts recommending the type of plan or whatever like that, and I don't want to wait until next month if we don't have to, to at least try to move forward on it, but if it's something we have to vote on, then I'm not making a motion right now then. Add it on the next agenda. Before you leave the new business, we had two board reps, student board reps, that in the beginning of the year, I believe came on in the month of October, Megan Gertner and Dylan Weaver, I actually saw Dylan as an attendee earlier, he must have got a little bored with the meeting and jumped off. But when they were named, I think the first night, Stevie Kovacs said that if they attended 85% of the meetings or something like that, I would buy them prom tickets, he voted, I guess, for me to do that. Well, I'm going to live up to that honor. It's not necessarily going to be a prom ticket, but I have both Megan and Dylan, I bought them gift cards and will be giving them, to them tomorrow. I actually saw Dylan in the, in the office the other day when I was up at the school, so I told him and told him to tell Megan, so I'm going to drop those off in recognition for the work that they did and also for, obviously, them losing some of their activities during this senior year.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Dr. Hoover.